Good morning. And welcome to Curry County Board of Commissioners Budget Committee Meeting, Monday, March 21st, 2022. And a call to order and pledge of allegiance. Please stand with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that's the call to order, pledge of allegiance. Second thing is budget orientation.
Okay, so I wanted to go through budget orientation before we elect the chair just to give everybody an idea of what's going to happen. We have a new member, Ed Schreiber, on the committee, and this will be review for the other two members. So the primary purpose of the budget committee is to receive, receive the budget message and the budget document, which you have in front of you in this binder. Another thing that has to be done is you need to give time, give time to the public to be able to speak and give their thoughts on the budget meetings. In each of the agendas for the days that we meet, there is a, with the exception of today, there is a time allotted at the end of the meetings to hear public comment. And that can be changed if, if the budget committee wants, wants to change it to the beginning or throughout. It will really be up to the chair to decide how they want to conduct that. And another reason is to participate in the development of the budget documents. So I would encourage all six members to ask questions to the departments as they're up here speaking next week. Make sure you understand why they're asking for the funds that they are and any questions so that, so that it will help to, help you to make good decisions as we look at the budget. As you'll hear in the, in the budget message in a few minutes, the county has a significant budget gap this year. And again, those, those questions to the department heads will, will help in maybe forming a plan that to try and reduce that. And then, then the final reason is to make a, a, to make recommendations on the department budgets to the, to the board of commissioners. Any questions about the purpose of the budget committee? Fairly simple, if you, if you, in, in some regards, just listen to what departments have to say, ask questions and make recommendations. So the agenda, I, in your books, I printed out all the agendas. It's, it's behind the Curry Public Transit in this, in the sleeve here on the left side. That way you guys can kind of see what's, what's going to happen over the next week. So today's, today's budget, today's meeting is really just consisting of orientation, electing a chair. The budgets have been distributed. I'll, I'll give the budget message in a minute. And then there's a facility tour for anyone who wants to go on, on it, whether you've been on it or not. And that, that'll just kind of help you to see the condition of the buildings and what is needed, what budgetary requirements are needed there. So the, if you, the next time we will meet will be on next Monday, 28th. And that is, that's where the departments will start to present their budgets. I, I wanted to give some time in between the orientation today and when the, and when you listen to the department presentations, to be able to have some time to go over this budget. And it's a, I don't remember, 150-page document, there's a lot to go over in it, but I wanted there to be a little bit of time so you could familiarize yourself with what the departments are asking and maybe have some preformed questions as they come in and present. So that's the reason for the gap this year in, in today and, and the rest of the meetings.
Director Rickert?
Yes.
Chair Alcorn. Could I just ask the agenda just to have introductions here because we have a new member and just for the public to know if that's appropriate?
We don't have a chair yet, by the way.
I think it's up to Mr. Herzog right now. He's the chair.
Yeah.
We just have it.
I'm afraid to usurp my authority.
Why am I wrong on until we elect a new budget committee chair? Is he still not chair? I mean, it's, it's not a huge thing, but I, I just recognize him as that. But anyway, can we have introductions?
Nobody else has, so we won't.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll finish, Bradley, go ahead and finish up and, and then, then we'll do a...
Introduction?
Introduction.
Thank you.
Okay. So, let's see, where was I? All right, anyway, so you, you have your agendas here. You can look through those and, and make changes to them at the beginning of each meeting if, if there need, if there are any changes needed. Just a couple of house cleaning issues. As members of the budget committee, you cannot get together in person, by telephone, by email, or any other means to discuss the budget. All discussions have to be in an open forum such as this, that's available to, available for the public. I wanted to quickly go over the budget structure. Again, Ed, you're new on the committee, so this will be new for you and review for the other two. Up on the screen, we have just kind of a basic budget that has, has some just-in-basic detail on it, and you'll see this on all the, all the department budgets. So first, you'll have this section up here that lists out all the total resources. The next section will always be the personnel expenses. And I don't think that there's a second page to this, but below this, and you can see it in your budget books, then you'll have all the rest of the general expenses, the professional services, the office supplies and everything, all, all of that. Hold on, let me just go down here. Okay, this is a good one because it's nice and short. Total resources in this department, $1,000. Personnel services total, $4,500. Coming down here, you have all the materials and services total up right there at $1,244, meaning requirements are $5789 and needing $4789 to, to meet the needs of this department. Now, that's a real quick rundown. What questions do you have on the structure there?
Just bigger print.
Well, just, just hold the book closer to your eyes.
Everything will be in your book.
Okay.
I'm sure the public would appreciate that.
So, so there are, the, the way that the budget is set up, there's a general fund that holds nine, nine different departments, and that will look slightly different than as, as you're looking at all the other department budgets. General fund departments, you will see this requirement down here, this $4,700 to, that needs to come from the general fund to backfill their, their department. Other departments, let's see if I can get to on... All the other funds you'll see will balance to zero. Okay? And that's just the, the nature of the funds. And that's why the, the funds needing those, the departments needing those funds are set in the general fund, so that they receive those, those funds that are needed. Just something worth noting is all. Something else that you've maybe noticed is, are these IGSs here? IGS stands for intergovernment service. It's a transfer between funds. And we use them a lot on the administrative side of things. Our administrative departments are essentially funded by all other departments. Some of the things that affect that, well, the, the way that IGSs work are the admin fees, is that take finance. Finance needs a certain amount of money to pay for the personnel, the supplies and all of that. That is then all broken up between all of the departments, and it's, and it's based on the size of their budget and the size of the overall budget. So there's, there's different factors that go into determining why this, for the road department, or for, for this department is $4,000. It comes off of how much, how, what their requirements are. And that then is a percentage of the total budget. So you may hear, you may hear some discussion on that as we go through the departments as to why, why their IGSs have increased this year when, perhaps when their budget decreased. Well, it's because that's not, those aren't the only factors involved in it. Other departments could have decreased their budgets more and it, and it redistributes everything. Anyway, it's, it's, can be a little complicated, but again, if you have any questions, just ask. Occupancy, there isn't an occupancy IGS in this department, but occupancy is split out similarly. It's, the occupancy department needs a certain amount to fund its operations, and that is split out between all the departments based on square footage. Occupancy is our, our maintenance department, so they take care of the, the utilities, replacing lights, the, the janitorial, those type of things. And whatever need, whatever financial need they have is split out based on square footage. So that's, that's the basics, basic structure of the budget. Anyone have any questions? Dave?
I just want to clarify something you said earlier. You mentioned that people can't, that these people can't talk amongst themselves about the budget. Everything has to be done in the hearings. Now, is that outside of regular quorum rules? Like, can, can Ed and Chris talk about the bu, talk about things outside of this room? Because there's only two of them. They're not a quorum. It's, do you mean none, no discussion whatsoever?
Yeah, no, no discussion about the budgets between budget committee members.
Excuse me, shouldn't he come with the microphone?
Probably. Question was, can, can any two members of the budget committee meet together outside of the, the open forum? And the answer is no. No budget committee members can, can meet outside the open forum to discuss the budget.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, that, that's kind of a quick rundown on, on the, the budget, the budget book and all that. If we want to do introductions, and then I can deliver the message, the budget message, and then, and we'll...
Yeah, I'll elect a chair first.
That's right.
So...
Yeah, let's elect a chair then.
Yeah, let's, let's, well, let's introduce everybody, and that way everybody will know who everybody is. I think we all do, but the, the public will know then who everybody is, and then we'll elect a chair. So I'm Commissioner John Herzog from Brookings. We'll go, we'll go that way.
Commissioner Christopher Pash from Gold Beach.
Brad Rickert, budget officer.
Court boys, commissioner.
Antipope County Council.
Brad Alcorn, Curry County.
Ed Schreiber, South County.
Douglas Baker, North County.
All right, thank you, guys, and thank you for your volunteerism and your commitment to Curry County. So now we will elect a chair, and so it's been...
I'll nominate Brad Alcorn as chair.
Okay, we got a nomination.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second? Any question? Hearing none, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Did you vote for yourself, or you don't have to?
Well, don't put him on the spot.
I'll say five, five to one abstention, so how's that?
All right.
So at this point, I will hand it over to you. And just so everybody knows, Brad was the chair last year and, and...
Year before.
Year before and, and way before me. So it's his baby now, and he has been kind enough to step in for somebody that backed out of the position for Central County, Gold Beach area, but next year will, this will be his last year on the budget committee as of right now. So welcome, Chair Alcorn, and it's yours.
Yes, this, this does appear to be my last year, and it's an honor to serve here. And if this is a consensus, I will absolutely be the chair, absolutely. So, um, let's move forward, Brad. You ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
All right, let's do it.
Although I, I'd like to back up for just a minute. That's okay. There are a couple of things I forgot to mention.
You bet.
So in the, also, as you look in the budget book, there's the Curry Public Transit budget. That is, that is the, like it says, the, is the budget for the transit district. It's, it's a little separate, and you'll hear from Kathy Bernhardt one of the other days this week about her budget. But that, so that's a little bit separate of a budget than, than, than the budget that we'll focus on, but that's in there.
Did you just say this week?
Next week.
Thank you.
Sometime next week.
Got a little nervous there.
The other thing you'll see in that sleeve is, is kind of a packet that looks like this. It's just some supplementary information I put together, some, just some comparisons between this budget year and last budget year, as well as the prior year's budget. I included that one in, in there simply because that was the last time that, that the budget was done where road funds were not used to balance the budget. So for me, it's, it's kind of interesting to see what has changed from that point to this, to this point. So there's just some of those sheets in there. And then, and I'll, I'll talk about this a little bit more in my budget message, but at the beginning of the budget process, I asked all departments for, for some, for a 10 to 15% budget cut. There's a supplemental chart on there, show, in, in the packet showing what was asked and, and where that department actually fell in for this year's budget compared to last year's budget.
Can I ask some questions?
Yes.
When was the last time we didn't have to use the road funds?
That was FY '21.
Twenty-one?
Yeah. Okay.
That is just a little bit controversial, though, on that summarization.
Okay, so you also have the budget message in your book if you want to follow along, or, or you can just listen to my melodic voice.
Melodic, wow.
Try not, try to keep it short so I don't put you to sleep. So I am submitting for your consideration the FY '23 proposed annual budget for Curry County. Proposed budget includes all revenues and expenditures for Curry County departments for July 2022 through June 2023. The types of funds that make up the county budget are the general fund, special revenue fund, internal service funds, enterprise and, and reserve funds. The proposed budget includes a total combined budget of $64.6 million. County revenues remain essentially unchanged from the previous year, while expenses have increased $1.5 million. This is mainly due to an increase in capital spending. Expenditures and reserves are reflected in the chart below. The budget is balanced by using property tax receipts, federal and state grants, fees from operations, $580,000 in general fund reserves, and approximately $5.8 million from the road fund reserves. This, although the balance, although, although the proposed budget is balanced, it does reflect a $5.8 million budget gap. County revenues are made up of federal and state funding, taxes, fees for county services and grants. Budgeted, budgeted resources are down $113,000 last, from last year, like I said, essentially unchanged. However, this year, the county budget, the county is budgeted to receive $3.8 million between ARP and TLT funds. So 2.2 million from the second payment of ARP and 1.57 million from TLT. This is having the effect of artificially propping up revenues to look in line with last year. However, much of these funds are restricted, with ARP funds only allowed for responding to the impact of COVID-19, and around 70% of TLT only allowed to afford tourism and promotion. While this is a great benefit to the county, discretionary spending within these funds is limited. There has not been any other substantial revenue added to the FY '23 budget and is a major reason for the budget gap of 5.8 million. Personnel expenses make up the bulk of the annual budget. Personnel expenses compared to the previous year's adopted budget increased by about $662,000 and is reflected in the chart over to the side. This increase is mostly due to MCOLA required by union contracts and progressive step increases for those not presently at the top of their position class range. These increases are necessary to main experienced and knowledgeable staff. PERS is expected to cost the county roughly $1.7 million based on the proposed budget. This is 25.5% of the, of the budgeted personnel expenses. This will be a continuing and increasing burden on, on the county as it is expected to increase to an average of 31.75% in, in the following year.
Could you repeat that, please, sir?
PERS is expected to, to increase by about 6 to 7% next year, 31%, about 32% of the personnel budget.
So that would probably be around 400,000, 500,000 additional?
Yeah, it could be, whatever that is.
One year.
Yeah. Okay, the net change in full-time employees has decreased by one from the previous year. The chart off to the left shows departmental employee changes for FY '23, total cost of these. And so, so you can see from the chart that the road, road has decreased theirs by three people, and there's been a few increases by three other departments. The total cost of those positions, those new positions, is $226,000. Expenses for material and services are budgeted at $10.6 million for FY '23. This is a reduction of $537,000 compared to last year. At the beginning of the budget process, a 10 to 15% reduction in materials and services compared to the FY '22 adopted budget was asked of departments to help mitigate the impacts of declining revenues and rising costs. The chart below reflects this by fund. So the balance of the budget is made up of capital, debt, inter, inter-fund transfers, contingency funds, special payments, and unappropriated funds. Funds for capital increased $1.5 million to $5.8 million due to, due to some road projects. Debt is unchanged from the previous year. Contingencies have increased by $1.7 million. This breaks out to $600,000 in tourism and promotion, that's coming from the TLT, and $100,000 in economic development, that's also coming from TLT. $200,000 in parks, $500,000 in vehicle replacement, and $300,000 in Title III. Unappropriate, unappropriated funds decreased by $3 million due to the transfers from the road reserves. I'll just... Those are funds, those are...
Pilts?
Yeah, well, it's not pilts, it's, well, it's hard for me to explain it. The Title III funds are restricted funds used for search and rescue, fire mitigation, some of, some of those activities.
More emergency?
Yeah, more emergency-based funding. That's a very simple answer, anyway. And I, and I'll pause right there to just kind of make note that having contingencies and unappropriated funds are, are really a, a good thing. So having contingencies rise by $1.7 million, that's good. Having unappropriated funds decrease, that's not as good. It is just less funds that the county has overall. This year, two new departments were added to the budget to account for TLT. First, a tourism and promotion department was created in the community development fund. And second, a TLT improvement projects department was added to the county fair fund. These new departments will help improve tracking of TLT revenue and expenses to ensure the county is appropriately using those funds. Another change to note is the reserve that has been building for a new computer server and phone hardware has been moved from the IT department to the general fund. This will prevent an inflated IT IGS to departments, but continue to build the reserve gradually over the next few years. Many department heads are proud of the service they provide to the public and work hard to keep expenditures within their budgets. Several have worked hard to reduce their budgets from last year. However, while materials and services have decreased, overall expenditures have increased. Combine this with the decrease in unrestricted revenue, I think I mean restricted revenue, has created the, the current budget gap of 5.8 million. This gap is going to continue to widen, even if further reductions are made to material and services. Therefore, this year's focus should be on bringing in new revenue sources that will shrink the current budget gap. Aggressive land sales, exploring logging, county land, new tax measures, they should all be explored. Finally, I want to thank all department heads for working hard on their budget and meeting the deadlines to be able to develop this budget. Also, wanted to thank the budget committee members in advance for their service and hard work over the next several weeks as we dig into the proposed budget to do what is best for the county and its citizens. So that, that is my budget message. I, I really think it, that the decrease in materials and services of a half a million dollars really highlights how much of a revenue problem we are having, because even as departments have decreased their budgets, we're, we're seeing more money coming from the road fund reserves. One thing I want to, a couple of things to note that have changed since we put the budget together, and when, when I wrote this budget message, is I discovered a small error in the personnel for, for code enforcement, building, planning. So we'll have to address that as, as that comes up, but right now, the allocations for our code enforcement officers aren't, they, they typically have been split equally between three departments. I, I discovered that some of those allocations were changed, and, and we need to revisit those allocations as, as, as we look at their budgets. So just something to keep in mind. Another, something else we will most likely be discussing is the way the fairgrounds use this TLT tax, or the TLT. It can, right now, it can only be used for capital expenditures. We'll have to have a discussion on how, how we can use that, or their budget reflects it being used for operating expenses. And there's also a slight correction that's going to be needed on the clerk's wages, the clerk's department's wages. Allocation were a little off, so we'll correct that during the process, too. Probably the, the biggest thing that will, that could benefit the county is, after I, I wrote the budget message, I started looking into the, the revenue loss calculation for the ARP funds that we received. I, I think that there'll be about $3 million to, that we'll have for next year, and we are eligible... And we are eligible for for revenue loss funds. What these funds, these funds are basically discretionary use funds at that point if they can be claimed as revenue loss. And with the rule change where there were the the final rule came out in February and there were some changes made to it. One of the changes was in the way that entities can look at revenue loss. Before it was a calculation, now the now you have the option of a calculation or a standard deduction. That standard deduction says that we can take up to ten million dollars or the limit of what we receive. To use as revenue loss or therefore discretionary uses in the general fund. We will have about three million dollars left of ARP funds. And that will be a my suggestion is we use that full amount to to offset this almost six million, six million dollar shortfall that we have. And that's still only half, but that will be a discussion that can be had.
I read is ARP funds restricted?
ARP funds are to be used for COVID-related expenditures. But in in the so so it gives a lot of the the rules give a lot of specific uses for it. One of those, one of the pieces is revenue loss. Before it was a calculation, then when the when the when they came out with the final rule. They 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 made a change allowing a standard deduction of up to ten million. So essentially it becomes unrestricted. And and maybe it's worth noting that anything that has been allocated could be unallocated. If you want to go that route.
Say again, what what is has been allocated could be unallocated?
It could be, yeah. It hasn't been paid out.
So would that all go into this budget, you're saying, or would we have to take some of that into next year's budget?
You, yeah, what we're dealing with is next year's budget.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, so.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, right?
Yes.
So would we put all three million unallocated or more if we choose to disallocate things to balance this budget, to help balance this?
Right.
Thank you, sir. So I just want the public to know what I'm hearing, and I somewhat suspected this would happen, is originally they made it very clear it could not go to any revenue losses. Okay, there were four categories that we've discussed. Not all COVID-related, but essentially at least indirectly tied. So what you're saying is now this, the American Rescue Plan function has evolved into to where at the national level, they're taking another look at it. They're going, oh, maybe it could be for budget deficits at the at the local level. Is that?
Essentially, what what they looked at is that is that the. The revenue loss calculation is fairly complex. It took me about four hours to go through it. And they they looked at it and said that can put an undue burden on small entities. And so they came up with a standard deduction of ten million dollars to help bypass that. That calculation, the the effort that would need to go into calculating revenue loss. Revenue loss was always part of the original interim final rule. It just they they just changed it to add the standard deduction piece of it.
So of the ARP funds the county has received, how many have been both allocated and spent so far?
A very small amount.
So.
Has been allocated and spent.
But so.
I've got your print out here, two point two, there's eight hundred thousand left, or excuse me, almost nine hundred thousand left. Some is some has been spent, some has just been allocated. The term they use, correct me if I'm wrong, is once it's spent, it's initiated. And so. That's where he's coming with three million, two point two that we'll get a year and a half from now. And the eight hundred thou- excuse me, the nine hundred thousand is left, so maybe a little over three point one.
But I think after last week, that's actually down to about six hundred because we re allocated another two fifty toward housing.
Do I have two hundred fifty on there?
There's only two fifty on there.
Correct.
Another additional two fifty.
That is a good point, though.
That is, so the budget committee understands that is we've got builders that want to make sure that when they come in here that the. Footprint is in place for them to be able to build infrastructure, design and all that. So that's why that money was set aside. We've got a couple of big projects in the county that are moving forward and. So with that, we in order to forget them to give them a comfort level to come in. And make you know, they want to make sure that the infrastructure will be in place, that's why we allocated that money.
And I'm I'm not suggesting that we that the board unallocates it, I'm just saying that it. Maybe there are projects there that that they want that the board wants to revisit. The two hundred and fifty for the housing is part of that number, it looks like.
But there's another two fifty, so it's five hundred total.
I got it.
Absolutely. Housing brings revenue.
And big.
So question for Brad, so five five point eight million dollar gap. So we've been hearing for a while now, two two million dollars for that for this budget that we're in right now. So that that is combined with the three point eight to make five point eight, is that kind of ballpark or?
Well.
Does that make sure?
So I've reported a two million dollar shortfall for this current budget year.
Yep.
There there was two, there was two million dollars that was expected to roll over from last year's budget to the current year's budget that didn't happen. If you look at it and and you think about it, it's a our expenses are really al- almost status quo. They're 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 pretty close. We expected to use, we budgeted to use this year, two point two million dollars from the road fund. That would that would go to the sheriff's office. So if you look at two point two million dollars plus the two million dollars that didn't roll over, there's four four point two. And plus the amount that the that is budgeted for the road fund to the road department to use. That it it, I guess, I'm getting is the math kind of adds up to five point eight million dollars. Because you have to you have to remember in this five point eight million dollars is also what the road fund is expecting to use. So there's probably about four point seven million that would be used for the rest of the county. And and another million dollars that the road fund expects to case. That's what creates the budget gap, okay? It's really the difference between the revenues we're bringing in and our expenses.
I have a question.
Oh, actually a couple of questions. Commissioner Pash, I know you're kind of spearheading the 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 housing issue. Did that five hundred thousand, is that do you anticipate that we use all of that or is that just showing, I heard you say that's showing the developers that were committed to the project?
Well, what they were afraid of is, let's say, a year down the road, the county doesn't have money to to finish what they've started. Then they don't they don't they don't want those kind of problems. We've already seen from our planning director and from our housing inspector who is helping to do a lot of the work on this. But they've already said, well, we're not going to bill the the road or or this this fund for that. We're we're just doing it in our spare time and and some other things. So I I personally don't think we'll ever use it. We've got a road department that can go over and put a lot of this infrastructure in on a on a cold rainy week. So, yeah, it is county time. And should the county be reimbursed for that? Yes, but those funds would then stay in the county anyway. So a lot of it's going to be inter interdepartmental, helping each other to make sure that all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted.
That was my question, so we're not, you're not anticipating writing a five hundred thousand dollar check to an outside source?
And all basically all of this will will stay in the county. It's just we wanted to protect the builders that are going to come in and and willing to stick their necks out to do these projects that that the infrastructure will be in place. And we can do most of that in-house.
Mr. Boyce?
Best case scenario would be several developers, that's that's what our goal and vision is.
Right.
So, Mr. Rooker, you you mentioned aggressive land sales, I think, in here, things that shrink the budget gap. So land sales, logging, tax measures, which we know are difficult to pass here. And you didn't mention any fees, is is that just insignificant as far as the fees that we charge for various services?
I don't.
Releasing properties and.
I don't think the fees that the county charges are insignificant, they definitely support several of the departments. Parks building, economic development, there there's several others, but they're all self-supported by the fees that that are charged. Departments on a regular basis, six month or either six months or every year, they're looking at their fees and adjusting their fees. I know our building official has has gone through and completely revamped his his fee structure to be more in line with. More in line with what he he feels that they should be. So they're not an insignificant portion, but they they are, I feel like, being looked at on a regular basis.
I guess my question is by raising the fees, can we offset a significant portion of this of this budget deficit?
No, not not by increasing fees for services that are already being charged. Because those fees essentially are already committed to funding their department. If you want to look at it as an example. Let's turn to. Tab twenty. We're looking for that building department. Which is quite a ways through the tab.
Did you say twenty?
Tab twenty, it's the it's the last couple pages.
Thank you.
Let me see if I can bring it up here on the screen to.
Right.
It's gonna take too long. Okay. It started on, right?
Mine, this is Sam Veteran.
I'll go one more.
Right, but it's it's under twenty is what I'm saying.
Oh, one more page, got you. Okay, if you look at the total resources of the building department, that it comes up to five hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. Four hundred and twenty-five thousand of that is our our fees. Flip the page and come down to the bottom of that where you see total requirements, five hundred ninety-three thousand dollars and in balance, zero. They are fully sustaining their department from those fees that they charge. And so increasing those fees, while it can help a department out, it can increase their contingency funds, their their reserve funds. Usually those fees are restricted and 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 we can't use them for.
Sheriff or other operation.
Yeah, not 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 just a flat out, hey, you've got an extra hundred thousand dollars in your department, we're gonna move it over here. It it does get used for general operation, general fund operations through those IGSs. That's one of the reasons why they are charged. And in in the case of parks, there is, I believe, ten thousand dollars that comes out of parks to help fund. Sheriff's office because they patrol the parks. There's there's a service involved there and that's how how those funds are able to be accessed.
Mr. Pash?
And there are also are some things that are we've done this year that aren't going to reflect in next year's budget. Because we don't know the revenues on record yet, like the abandoned property or the vacant owner, I'm sorry, the vacant owner registration. The pet license thing that we just pushed through the other day. We just pushed through having our county parks pay the resort tax like all of the other vacation rentals do in the county. So these are all things that will, again, help each department pay their own nut and they don't have to draw from the general fund.
Are those reflected in this?
No, they're not.
Some of them are, the dog licenses and the vacant property, unless we can go there and look at it real quick. Yeah, let's do since we're talking about it. It'll it's same tab. Up closer to the front, probably five, six pages in. Says code enforcement. So dog licenses, animal licenses are reflected at seventy-five thousand dollars. Property property registration is also reflected in there. That's only a portion of the entire property. Now, the the other one that you mentioned, the.
Taxes for vacation rental.
That that one is not reflected.
And and that's what what it was on last year's budget was actually a burden on the budget because we had code enforcement where this next year, I think, code enforcement will sustain. The new employee, not only the new employee they hired, but I think it'll sustain a lot of the whole apartment.
While we're on that, it is worth noting that right now they're drawing two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars from the general fund. Now, if there are new revenues that come in, that will help offset that. But luckily, that does also reflect the new employee.
Which we don't even have yet.
Which we don't have yet, but it's in next year's budget because we expect it to be there. If approved.
On that same note, so are there any as far as land sales and logging? Are there any numbers on that, the potential? Potential revenue?
There are no numbers on it right now because nothing has progressed to a point where where it's real enough to to have it in the budget. There there has been some discussion on logging. What that that four thirty-eight or forty acres up, I don't.
Order, if I may. On the grassy knob, that's basically a ridge surrounded by three different property owners. Excuse me, Koki Indian tribe. Lone Rock has some timber up there. And also, of course, the Ford Family Foundation on Douglas Timber. We're the only ones that haven't logged it, it's thirty-four acres. Realistically, it's the only property we have in the county that has any marketable value. Actually, thirty-eight acres, I think, maybe thirty-nine. I've been there a couple of times. Best case scenario, after after logging costs, after reforestation, all the above. Depending on the market, of course, we might get, we might clear a half million dollars. But it's ready now if we wanted to do that. As far as land sales go, we don't have a lot of land available that has anything other than, generally speaking, other than an unusual size or shape. But that's not to say we shouldn't approach that or take a look at that. Just I think would require a lot of staff time and we have a pretty good inventory of that as well. But I'm glad to see that line, I'm glad that you asked questions on that, I think it's important to know where we are and the public to know.
Yes, Court, I understand that reforestation takes, you have a two-year statute of limitations on that. So in other words, a logging takes place, but the owner, us, for example, does not have to reforest that for another two years.
Actually, you have three years, but most.
Three years.
Most timber operators try and do it within two years so they don't get caught after that deadline, you know, with conditions, weather. Available workforce, et cetera.
What I'm thinking of is that the the costs of logging and getting that out, that the reforestation, don't really know what, obviously, what the cost would be. But that can be transferred two to three years out. So that may be a a revenue. So that may be a, a revenue source, uh, but would only represent a timing difference. However, in our case, it may be something worth looking at.
Oh, well said. Yes, I agree.
Mr. Pash?
Most contractors, when you contract them to log, there, in their contract is the reforestation. I've had a couple look at my ranch to log part of it, and in their contract, it says that we're, we're not only gonna log it, but this is part of our contract is the reforestation, so it's automatically in their bid. I think there's some state statutes on that, but I'm not sure.
Easily spray it and then plant it?
Yeah.
Right, right.
That's why we tried to connect with the Kokil tribe, because they, they actually logged a section on each side of it. And so they might look at managing forests with an agreement at some point in time. And they also see the value there. Um, but, uh, it's, you know, it's, it's, everything's market-driven, as you well know.
What'd you say?
So, just to summarize, Court, we have about just under 40 acres of land that could be logged, that could possibly yield 500,000 dollars or so. That's a one-time deal, because 25 years before it can be done again. And there's no other property in the county that we could potentially do the same thing with.
And that is my opinion. We have a lot of, we have a lot of nice land that has spruce.
Okay.
Coastal spruce. Some of them real big trees. You know, but there, there just, there just really isn't any market for that, as you, as you gentlemen know.
Commissioner Herzog, I know you've been working on this, so-
Yeah, so there's another piece of property close to that, that 40 acres on grassy knob, 20 acres. And I wish Becky, Becky, if you can hear, would you come up if you're watching this? But, um, and then there's also 34 acres on Airport Road, um, kinda split. And that, we met with the, uh, Kus Forest Patrol, Forest, um, Kus County Foresting A- Agency. They have their own, I mean, Kus County has tons of forest land. So there, we got a more agreement, which we share with, uh, Kus and Curry County, and they, they're gonna cruise that and give us a price of logging that. And that's where we're gonna put the, um, um, veterans RV park with some, uh-
Road fund stuff.
Road, road fund.
Road department stuff.
And road, yeah, road fund area, but on the, there's a seven-acre parcel. It's kinda split by Airport Road.
How many acres was that again?
34.
34.
What, what it is, it's, uh, seven and 20, seven and 25 acres, and we would wanna leave, it's right on Highway 101. So it's really got some limits. And I've been through there. Again, I'm saying, I'll be shocked if there's any realistic value there. It's beautiful. It's all flat ground, and I think the, the plans we have to, uh, take advantage of Pacific High School and all this going on there, the, the veterans, especially the seven acres on the north side, I'm just, and I hope I'm wrong, but I'm just guessing that there's, again, no value there. Uh, there's some cedar, uh, some fir, but mostly spruce. Yeah. Brad?
And so in some of my conversations with our planning director, um, she's stated that we have plenty of forest lands, plenty of land to log. Um, I, I agree with you, Commissioner Boyce. It, it would take a lot of, a lot of time and effort to, to really kind of inventory all that and, and, uh, see, see what's there and, and start creating a plan for that. Um, I, I do think it's, in our current sit- situation, it is worth looking into a little bit more.
So, good ideas, but-
Ideas.
Nothing, nothing in the bank right now.
Right.
And therein lies the problem.
Uh, yeah, about the, uh, property on Airport Road, I know we're gonna use it, we're all gonna use it for veterans' housing, but could a portion be chunked, taken out to use for a commercial or, or industrial or something where we could lease that space? Would that be, since you got, since you got 101 frontage?
Some of it's been identified as wetland, so I think it would be difficult to break that into different sections. Um, following up on what Commissioner Boyce and Commissioner Herzog, um, you know, some of that's, hopefully, we can put some veteran housing in there, and I've spoken with Ms. Crockett about this as well, and she's hopeful that the timber that we, uh, get from that property will fully fund the RV center for veterans. So that's, that's what we're hopeful to use that money for. Um, and then the, uh, road department wants to use some of that as a staging area for a lot of equipment, rock and all that kind of stuff, because it's so expensive to just keep hauling stuff to North County. They, if they have a staging center there, then that'll be, that'll actually save the county lots of money. That's, that's what I think a lot of that property's gonna be used for that isn't wetland.
Are there any other properties in the county that are potential revenue source that haven't been exhausted?
I believe there are a, a lot of properties that the county owns, and, and we, it should be looked at, um, to see what, what potential revenue sources they, that they are. Um, I guess I think if we're, if, if we have land that's not, that we're not using, just sitting there not doing anything for us, we, we should look into plans to, to sell it, um, and then get some property taxes off it afterward.
Because I understand that they're selling it, then we'd have to split everything with, off the special district.
That's true.
So we might be, why do we get onto it and lease it, right?
Or, or-
Do a land lease.
Or you convert it to a park. Um, you designate it as a park, you sell it, and then that money stays within the county, although within the Parks Department. And then you can be, you have to be a little creative in how to access those funds. But, yeah, it, it don't, wouldn't go simply to the general fund.
Are there homes and offices that are on the order of being repossessed or in, in default, that we can do something with those homes or buildings that would benefit?
That's probably a question for the tax assessor.
We've, we've actually looked at, like, the property down in South County that, um, was, uh, Sheriff's Department moved on several months ago. And to abate that property is a huge expense, and then you'd have to lean the property and all those kind of things. And it would, it would take many years to be able to, uh, be able to convey that property because of the right of rescission and all that, once you do have it. Um, you'd have, I think, a three-year in Oregon, a three-year right of rescission, I'm not sure, but, so it would be, it would be a long time to be able to, anything that you're gonna move on, it's gonna take a long time to be able to move forward with it.
So even a home, that?
Yeah, and a, a lot of the properties that the county owns, as, as Commissioner Boyce said a while ago, are very narrow and obscured, you know, cutouts, but alleyways and little parcels between other properties. And they really have no value. We've actually given some of those away just to clear our books on some of that because they're 12 feet wide and 18 feet long kind of things. So a lot of the inventory that the county has is a lot of those obscure properties that really have very little value to them.
Mr. Boyce?
Mr. Chair, I really appreciate this conversation. I think it's, uh, it's take a little time, but it is beneficial, and it helps you to know, it helps to hear from the other commissioners with the work, research, et cetera, what they've done. And no lack of optimism here, but this, these kind of discussions have been going on to the Board of Commissioners for at least the last 10 years. Um, and there's been some good hearts, focus, interest in, uh, you know, pursuing some of the things that we're discussing. Um, anybody knows me, I'm the opposite of anti-timber harvest, but to suddenly think, and nobody's, I'm not suggesting anyways, is recommending that, but for us to suddenly become a timber harvest or logging county someday, hopefully, but no, we're a long way from that. And so, you know, I'll stand by my, my, uh, almost a concern that we did, with the valuable land we have, it's not under the timber value, um, category. Uh, other than the, the 34 acres that we talked about, uh, grassy knob, North County. Um, but we're in the process, I brought it before the board, what, six months ago, about starting a Curry County forestry department, and, uh, we're getting closer to that and with the help, yeah, as Commissioner Herzog said. Coincidentally, both Jackson, excuse me, Josephine and Kus County have about 17,000 acres of forest, and they, they rotate it all the time and do an excellent job. So that should be our long-term vision. We grow the greatest timber here. Thank you for that time.
Any other comments? Questions? Anybody? Anything else in the budget message? Brad?
Nothing, nothing else for the budget message.
Okay. Um, I do wanna talk about, uh, briefly about our future agendas for next week. Um, I, as Brad indicated, public comments were set at the end of, of the budget meeting. They have typically, in the past, been in the beginning, and I'd just like to get everybody's input on, if there's a preference, I certainly wanna make sure that we, uh, we give the public the opportunity to come in and, and, uh, present any information or have any discussion with us that they would like to. Um, so I'm looking for any input on, um, what would be a preference on that.
Some of the options that you do have is just to, um, we, we don't need public comment every day if you don't want. It can be one time at the end, at the beginning of the, of the whole budget process. Um, I, I put it on there every day, just kind of as a starting point.
Right.
So it could be anything you want, if you guys want.
Mr. Pash?
I would concur with Director Rooker on that. I, at the end or at the beginning, and not after every director comes up and-
Right.
...consent your budget, because that'll get-
Yeah, no, no.
We might have the same sort of people commenting and all them, and they'll just go on and on.
No, and I, and I, I, I don't want, th- this is, uh, whenever, whenever there is a shortfall like this and a lack of money, everybody fights for it. And, uh, there's some pretty passionate conversations that happen, and I, I do wanna, uh, I want the department heads to be able to come in here and present their information and, and, uh, follow the agenda as close as possible. But I also wanna be very transparent to the public and make sure that, uh, they have an opportunity to communicate with us, uh, what their feelings are. So if there's a preference, beginning or end, uh, of the meeting, Commissioner Herzog.
I say end? I mean, it just makes sense if you hear what's been said and then you can comment on it, you can make notes or-
Okay. Commissioner Boyce, you had a comment?
Thank you. Um, I'm kinda at the end of the, or the opposite of that in that, don't ask and convince it through the whole meeting if you, if we don't have to. If they see something on the, the pro, proposed budget that gives them concern, they can come in and voice that, and then we can hear it. And then if they wanna stay the whole day, they can. If they don't, we open it up. That's what we do on our regular meetings, too, and I think, and see, we've gotta set time here every day, so that, you know, I, I'm not dogmatic on that, but I think that could be.
I would prefer to be in with myself or someone's, Commissioner Herzog. So we can get your business, we can focus on everything, and we have, have it all, you know, so not delayed in our days, we have, we have an hour of public time.
Okay.
So it's safe to move.
Any comment, Mr. Baker?
Uh, not at the moment.
All right. Um, I, I, I tend to concur with the end, Brad. I think, I think you've laid out the agendas very well, and, and, uh, putting it at the end would give people the opportunity to, to listen and speak, and they can always come in the next day and, and, uh, and speak to any points that they have as well. So, uh, for the public who's listening, we will keep the public comments, uh, towards the end of the day, and, uh, we'll proceed with the agendas as they are. All right? Uh, any other, any other issues related to the agenda at all? Commissioner Pash?
I have one. Um, I've had something, as this, as this committee may know, and I really don't wanna do this in public, but I guess I have to. Um, I've had some health issues in the last couple of weeks, uh, after being in, uh, in Medford on, uh, Thursday. I have to have a procedure done. And when a doctor looks at you and says, you need to do this, um, I've got two appointments that I can do it on Wednesday, next Wednesday, or in May, and he says, you need to get this done. So I've already noticed that, um, the thrust of our budget will be done, I think, Wednesday of next week is pretty much discussion and public comment and recommendations, which I actually have two procedures. One is an ultrasound kind of a thing, and then the other one is a procedure. In between those procedures, I can be on my computer in the meeting if, 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 I could just be on a phone and be able to comment. And of course, I'll drive all night if I have to, to be here Thursday, so, but it's something that I really, I, I would not miss this if I didn't have to.
Well, given what you've gone through, uh, and, uh, which was amazing to me, you went through that and, and didn't miss the next meeting. You showed up, so, uh, I mean, my hat's off to you there. That's definitely commitment. Um, so I, I think that, I, I think everybody here would agree that needs to be accommodated. We need to make sure that you, you, you take care of those health concerns. So, um, that will be a priority, and we'll make those adjustments. Absolutely. Um, I really wanna emphasize, and I really want to, um, make sure that we are as transparent as we can be through this process. And, uh, like I said earlier, I know this can, there will, there will be passionate discussions, um, from department heads, from, from us, that will happen. And I just wanna make sure that we, uh, we are being professional, uh, and we're, we're setting whatever personal differences or agendas, we leave them outside, and we do our absolute, absolute best for this county. And, um, I'm, I, I know, I've worked with Mr. Schreiber, uh, on our city's budget, and he is, um, he is every bit as committed as I am and very diligent in going through the numbers, and he's, and he's, he's pretty good at it. So I know he'll have a lot of questions, and, um, and I just wanna make sure that we can, we can be a team in here, and we can work together as much as we can, because if we can do that, we'll accomplish a great deal. So, uh, that being said, uh, tour facilities is next on the agenda.
Yeah.
And, uh, I have, I have spent a lot of time touring the facilities. Uh, there is a couple things that I wanna take a brief look at today that may have changed. Um, and I would really encourage you that, you know, anything you haven't seen, uh, it was very, uh, eye-opening to me, uh, when I went through it, so, so I'd, I'd highly recommend, uh, recommend that. Obviously, you guys tour it every day, don't you? Um, so, any questions, comments, concerns?
I, I would like to, um, see if we can get a commitment from the Board of Commissioners based on what we've been told today about ARP funds to, uh, would you consider, uh, not doing any more allocations until after the budget process is done? I don't know where we are as far as, you know.
We don't have another meeting before this process is done.
Okay, you don't have a, a meeting next week?
Hopefully, we'll be done.
Hopefully, unless we have an emergency.
Okay. Uh, I mean, I'm very pleased, that was news to me today, that, that, uh, we could use those funds to help balance our budget, so, yeah, that was good news.
Okay.
All right. If there's no other questions, we'll adjourn.
All right.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thanks for your service, guys.
Appreciate it. Brad, where is the tour?
Um, the chat's coming up.